I'll call the study session for Newport Beach City Council for December 9th, 2008 to order. We have the roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all council members are present.
Okay. First item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilwoman Gardner. Councilman Curry.
Nothing.
Councilman Webb.
I have none.
Councilman Hen.
Everything was perfectly clear.
Councilman Rosansky.
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Protim Dagel.
None.
And I have none. Okay. Next item is the Oasis Senior Center update.
Mayor, I thought it would be a good idea before we close out the year to make sure that council understands what the key scheduling dates that we are going to be meeting next year for Oasis. So David Webb is going to walk us through those dates.
Thank you. If you recall, we did have a study session on October 28th on this item, but we wanted to take an opportunity just to give you the dates on the schedule again. And also, there is an item on your agenda night dealing with the environmental document for that. So with Oasis currently, as we recall, we are in the design phase right now. We're going into second plan check on our design. We're hoping to be out of design and permitted by the end of this month and be bidding the project in January. We have a pre-qualification list of contractors now. There are currently 20 contractors that are pre-qualified for this project and waiting for the bid packages to come out. Our goal is to complete the bid and bring it to council, hopefully at the first meeting in February. It might be the second meeting in February. And then we'll move into the construction phase in which we hope to start in March. In the meantime, we'll be setting up temporary trailers across the street in the park. That is also part of the item tonight for the exemption on that. We've got the trailers ready to order, working now with utilities to get the various utilities to the site, the sewer and the power, various items like that. The cost estimate's still on track. It's still roughly, we're thinking it's going to be about 17.7 million plus contingencies. It puts it about 18.6, 18.7 when you put the contingencies on that. With the item tonight that you're going to see on your consent calendar, it has, coming out of our planning department, we're looking to approve the mitigated negative deck with this project. We did do a negative deck, and we had no comments on that other than Metropolitan Water District that basically had a minor comment. There are three zoning exemptions that are listed in there. In there, we discuss an item in regards to the parking standards. And actually, the parking standards are kind of vague in this type of facility, but are, we noted it in here because we want to bring it to your attention. We'll be meeting any kind of parking standards because we control the programming of the site. We also run shuttles on the sites. We don't feel that's going to have any kind of conflicts here. The other one that we're talking about is the temporary facilities. Technically, across the street in the park, it's an O.S. zone right now. That doesn't allow temporary facilities, but to keep the continuity of the staff and Oasis and the Friends, that's the most logical place to put that facility. There's an exhibit in here that shows that we're going to put those temporary trailers in there. And it will be for the duration of the project, and they'll be removed at the end and the parking lot restored.
Do we always, or ever?
I'm sorry?
Make open space and parking lots the same thing? I mean, that isn't open space. It's a parking lot.
Parking lots are allowed.
They are?
Yes.
Does it take up the whole thing?
I'd have to refer to planning, but I believe because it's part of the park, it would be under the same zoning jurisdiction. Is that how you'd read that, Janet? But for that, we want to make sure we're official on that, and we'll call it for an exemption so that we can approve that tonight. The last one has to do with some roof mounted equipment, and there are some exhibits in here. We've gone to great lengths to try to screen that equipment. There is some equipment over the kitchen area. And because the site has residences above it in the back, there is some ability to see those. So we've added some additional screen walls between the equipment. And then our mitigation will, for the, I don't know, 20 percent that you can still see, will be to paint that equipment the same color as the screen walls, and hopefully it'll blend right in to the equipment. That's the best mitigation we can do without adding bulk to it by adding the screen wall a lot higher, which would then be a visible eyesore from the street, adding weight to the project, or putting some kind of lid on it, which then had its own building code issues to access and getting underneath of it. So those are the three items we're looking for, basically, your approval on this item tonight and that. And with that, I'd conclude our study session unless there's any questions.
Okay. Mayor Protim Dagel.
What's of the estimated 18.7 million? I'm sure the public would be interested in knowing, what's the, kind of the payment plan on that in terms of what is going to be due when? What are we looking at as far as O nine?
I think that would be something that would be figured out with the bid and how they're going to accomplish the trades and when they would be calling for partial payments.
Right. Actually, that will be spread out over the duration of the project, and you usually see the bulk of that will happen in the, I'm guessing, the middle portion where you're wrecking the building, and there's a lot of trades on it. It tails off at the end when you're doing parking lots and lighting and landscaping. So your expenditures will ramp up coming in March, probably coming to a steady flow sometime in maybe May, and decreasing as you get to October of 2010.
Dave, can I ask you a question? And that is, once the bids come in, how long would they normally be good for?
Typically, I believe it's 60 days unless you get a written approval from them that they'll extend that. Because of the length of the time on this bid, they'll probably want us to act pretty quick because the numbers change, and they wouldn't want to have too much exposure on that.
And the only reason I bring that question up is because it probably bears being brought up. There's a lot of talk now about a stimulus package, and we are moving forward perhaps in advance of when the stimulus program would be approved by Congress. And I think it would be, you know, irresponsible of me not to at least raise that issue to be thinking of it. The timeframe probably works pretty well, give or take a few months, but really, no one knows now. We know there will be a stimulus package. It will be quite large. We don't know what the criteria are going to be, but a project like this would probably fit very well within that since it would be labor intensive and material intensive.
Yeah. And actually, as a follow-up to that, and it's something I've mentioned in the past, I mean, I understand we're moving forward full speed ahead here, but we still haven't had a discussion of exactly how we're paying for this. So, you know, this is our last meeting in December. We're talking about tearing down the building after the first of the year, and we still haven't had a council meeting or a discussion or a study session to discuss. I mean, as far as I know, we have half the money. Where's the other half coming from? That's what I want to know.
We have all of the money if we want to use it for that purpose because we have approximately $23 million set aside in a CIP fund that we did not intend to use on a single project, but intended to use over a period of time in order to soften our bond payments. But we had talked before about we could loan that money, you know, basically, and get it paid back on a future bond issue. Well, so there are some options, and you're absolutely right. We need to bring that to the city council.
Well, I think we need a fuller, more robust discussion of the options before we let any, well, certainly let any contracts.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Webb.
You had mentioned that the roof material was going to be, I mean, the kitchen equipment was going to be screened with a screen. How different from what is there today is what you're proposing?
I'll take a stab, and if I miss this, Janet, you can help me, but it's substantially better. Most of the building, all the equipment is screened on all, the one on Fifth Street and the one on Marguerite. It's the middle building where the kitchen runs perpendicular to the street. You look right down that row, and there's four air conditioners, I believe, and vents on top of that. My opinion, it's going to look better.
Is it better or worse than what's there today?
I think the rooftop will look substantially better.
Okay. That's the main thing I wanted to get at. Thank you.
Councilman Curry.
Yeah, Dave, I just want to commend you and the staff because I think you've done a great job on moving this project forward on budget and on schedule. And in fact, it's a very quick schedule in terms of the conception of the plan, the design, and I think the implementation. I think the community's going to be very proud of the result. And I was on the Christmas walk, and Oasis, Friends of Oasis had a display on the street and just talking to some of the people passing by. They were very, very excited about what's going to happen on that site. I congratulate the staff for that.
Thank you. We're real excited. It's really been a team effort, every department, from building to planning to recreation, has stepped forward and made it a priority. And we've had all the support from you folks. I know there's a lot of lobbying things going, so I thank you actually for bringing this forward.
Any other questions, Dave? Okay. Thanks, Dave. Next item is the Buck Gully. Was there any public comment on the Oasis Senior Center update? Okay. Seeing none. The Buck Gully vegetation clearance, the environmental impact report needed at a cost of $150,000 to $200,000. Ouch.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council, Steve Bunting, Fire Department. When we came, when I came before you in October with a proposed amendment to the fire code, some of the issues that were raised were geotechnical study and the need for an environmental impact report. The council instructed the city attorney to look at our ordinance and see, in fact, if it did have to comply with CEQA. A couple of weeks ago, excuse me, a couple of weeks ago, we were told by the attorney's office that it did. And so I went shopping. I started with the consultant that provided the service for the watershed project in Buck Gully because they're already working in the neighborhood. And I showed him the details of the ordinance and the area that it would affect, and without a RFP, the best he could do is give me an estimate between $150,000 and $300,000. And I think he was really softening me up for $200,000 to $250,000. So that being said, I'm reporting back to you on that finding, and I will be looking for some direction from you on what to do with that. In the meantime, we had another piece of legislation fall into our lap. This is a bill, Senate Bill 1595, that was signed by the governor in September. It was authored by State Senator Christine Keough from San Diego, and it has to do with fuel reduction in very high fire hazard severity zones. And I'm going to tell you about what's on this map here in a second. The legislation by Senator Keough is in excess of what we were proposing to amend in our own fire code. In effect, it requires fuel modification, remember, that's the treatment in Newport Coast area and other new areas, for all areas of the state that are in very high fire hazard severity zone. Now, what is that? The very high fire hazard severity zone, which from now on I'll be calling very high zone, the state of California, specifically the State Fire Marshal's office, was required by the Bates Bill adopted around 1995 to create zones in the state of California for both state resource areas and local resource areas. Last summer, the State Fire Marshal presented all the local agencies in California with a preliminary map that shows the zones in the state resource areas and how they interface with the local area, and gave the locals the job to make any comments on the map and also to make recommendations for local resource area within the city because the state is only concerned with SRA and where it interfaces. And I'll show you that. So in my response to the state, I think I pointed out five anomalies in the map. For instance, you know, what is this and why is, why is that different than the area around it? It's, that's the, that's the Crystal Cove area. So yellow is high, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yellow, yellow is high and red is very high. So there's Newport Coast Road right there. So now, this is the map from the state with, again, without any local areas on it. I also, for instance, Morning Canyon, Buck Gully, I also requested that they upgrade that to very high. Spyglass Canyon, I requested an upgrade, a couple, a couple of others. And that hasn't absolutely been done because what they do to develop this map, the State Fire Marshal is working with the fire lab at UC Berkeley, and believe it or not, it's being done scientifically with a computer model. They're looking at vegetation, topography, weather, local weather, crown fire potential, that's crown fires, treetop fires, amber production and movement, and also brand receptivity. Brand receptivity is the ability of a home or a structure and its landscaping to capture brands and allow fire to start. So those are the factors.
Steve, Steve, where did they get the information?
Well, they did it with aerial and on-the-ground reconnaissance. They did it with aerial photos.
They actually came and looked at the?
Yeah, and actually came and looked at areas. So, you know, that's, that's how they did it, and they fed all that information. It's hard. I would think it'd be very hard, but that's, this is what they've done for the entire state, so. So anyways, I've submitted my comments, and we're due to get our comments back after January. And once we receive them back from the State Fire Marshal, we'll have 30 days to hold a public hearing and let the residents comment on the proposed local zone changes. They won't be able to make comments on the state, but, but they will on any local changes that we want to make. Now, what it says in the bill is this. Previously, the state law, through the Public Resources Code, only dealt with fire resistive, fire, fuel modification requirements for state-owned property. And that was in the Public Resources Code. The Keough bill added all locally owned property to that, to that requirement. Let me read you, for instance, in the scope of the bill, it says, "The prevention of wildland fires is not a municipal affair as that termed is used in Section 5, Article 11 of the California Constitution, but is instead a matter of statewide concern. It is the intent of the legislature that this chapter apply to all local agencies, including but not limited to charter cities, charter counties, charter cities and counties." Then, further in the bill, there's a description of the work that's required. And it says, "The amount of fuel modification," that's a very important term because we've talked about that, "the amount of fuel modification necessary shall take into account the flammability of the structure as affected by building material, building standards, location, and type of vegetation. Fuel shall be maintained in a condition so that wild fire burning under average weather conditions would be unlikely to ignite the structure." That term, under average weather conditions, is exactly the term we use when we're designing fuel modification zones. We want, we're looking for, to prevent a fire under average weather conditions from burning into the homes. So this bill is very much talking about converting areas to fuel modification, which is a higher standard than what we proposed to you in our amendment. So.
Quick question, Steve.
Yes, sir.
Would average weather conditions include a Santa Ana wind condition?
I think, I think today is an average day. If they don't, that's, that's a difficult thing with saying something like that, what an average day is. Today, we have light to medium, I would say, offshore winds. This is specifically talks about Santa Ana Diablo or mono winds in the legislation. So I would say today we have light to medium winds, and I would say today is probably an average day on a continuum. That's probably.
Well, I mean, certainly to me, and I'm, as a layman, it seems that most of these wildfires, the rarely devastating ones, happen on high Santa Ana wind condition days where the fires are set. I mean, that's when fire bugs go out and set them, and that's when these canyons and gullies and things are most likely to have a fire event, most likely to need the fuel modification. I mean, that seems kind of.
Yeah. Well, you have to understand that in Southern California, fire services go to brush fires every single day, every single day.
I know, but those are not the devastating kind that burns 500 homes. Those burn 15 or 20 acres, and, you know, the fire department goes out there and sprays it out, and it's done with.
That's correct.
You know, you don't, you don't have those kind of crazy, which is, I think, is what concerns me and the rest of the residents in town, the ones, you know, that obviously haven't been here yet to complain about the new ordinance, but, but.
Yeah.
I mean, I would just hope that whatever we adopt would address a little bit more severe than what I, as a layman, would consider an average weather day. Even today, although it is kind of breezy, it's not what I would consider a Santa Ana wind condition day, like, like we saw with the last set of fires.
Well, what, what she's describing in her bill is very much like the fuel modification we have in Newport Coast and other parts of Orange County. And as we've seen in the last few fires in Orange County, it has worked very well, even in high winds. So I think, I think fuel modification is, is a, is a good goal. I think.
It's definitely a good goal. I just want to make sure we get to the goal where we want to be and not do, you know, kind of a half job or something.
I, I agree. I agree. Fuel modification is a good goal. Beyond that, we're, we're talking about really taking a lot of vegetation off, off of hillsides. And I'm not sure we'd be happy with those results necessarily. So it's, I think, I think that what she's, what she's talking about here will do the job for us. So what I would ask you, or what I would recommend to you, is that you let me run this out and see if this does have fall under CEQA. We've, we've got calls and email to the, to the senator's office, and the city attorney's office has started working on that. So I would just ask for a little bit more time to see if, if in fact, this is required to have an environmental impact report.
May I add to that? When Steve brought this new bill to our attention, one of the questions that started coming to my mind, as you heard, the language is preemptive. In other words, the legislature is declaring that they have preempted local control over this issue, and once those areas are designed. So that raises issues if they're going to preempt. Has the state done an environmental analysis, or have they looked at the fact that the legislature needs to provide for categorical exemption for us to do it? Or do we have to do an environmental analysis to be able to implement the state law? So those are some things that we need to talk about and find out, and just more research on. So I agree with Steve's recommendation that maybe we need to play out this legislation and see how it intersects with our own proposed ordinance before we spend money on environmental impact report on our ordinance when we may be preempted by the state law.
If I could ask a question, does, does the Keough bill constitute a state mandated local program?
Probably.
For purposes of reimbursement?
Exactly. So we could add that to the billion dollars that they owe us.
Keep the tab running.
They're good at coming up with state mandates and saying they're going to pay for them.
Keep, keep the tab running.
Actually, I think that it doesn't. It says no reimbursement is required by this act. Sorry.
Well, just because they say so doesn't mean that it's true.
Fair enough.
But it's my understanding if they require that of private properties also besides municipalities, then it is not a mandate that would be collectible under the state because the privates wouldn't have that reimbursement possibility.
I would only observe that this is a very important issue. We need to move this quickly. So let's determine what we need to do from an environmental or not environmental standpoint, but let's get this canyon cleaned up by the next fire season.
So just to be clear, Steve, we, we had this look at this ordinance that was going to require some fairly substantial changes to Buck Gully, and there was a lot of discontent about that. But going to fuel modification would require a good deal more removal of shrub and vegetation than what our ordinance has provided.
That's correct. It requires a redesign of the hillside and puts it into zones, so you have your native zones closest to the canyon bottom, and then your ornamental vegetation closest to the structure. And also, keep in mind that for those canyons, whenever anyone remodels or rebuilds their house, they are required to convert their slope to fuel modification under our current law. So it's, it's something that will happen over time, even if we do nothing at all. It's a bit of a patchwork right now.
So I think what people are most concerned about is the impact on trees. This will have a significantly greater impact on the trees.
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Councilman Gardner?
I just, I wonder, when the Orange County Flood Agency, Flood Control Agency feels there's too much vegetation, and they haven't been maintaining it, they declare an emergency. They say, oh, well, there might be a flood, and they go in and they clean it out. If we really felt that we were projecting, we have a dry winter, and so it's even in worse condition, is there a possibility that we could just declare it an emergency and go in and take care of it?
The difference is that when the Orange County Flood Control does that, they're, they're going in and clearing out property that they own because they're, they're easements and theirs.
Okay.
This issue, we would be going on private property and clearing it out, so that would be difficult to declare that type of an emergency and then go in and do it, at least from an environmental point of view. I do think that the state law, though, may change that factor because if the requirements are, as I understand, and I haven't had a chance to closely review the legislation yet, but if the requirements are, as I understand, on the private property owners and their obligations, then that would leave the city only being, from a point of view of enforcing as an arm of the fire marshal, the State Fire Marshal, enforcing state regulations that these property owners have to comply with. And then we wouldn't need to do our own ordinance or adopt, have our own environmental document. So that's one of the, that's one of the things that we need to look at, is how does this correspond to whatever our local control is.
Councilman Webb.
I'm just curious a little bit. When you indicate the, the areas in red that are, now, these are, are the hills down, down coast between here and Laguna. Now, we're not talking about doing any modifications in those hills, are we? We're only talking about creating?
No, it's the 100 feet, 100 feet behind the homes.
Well, 100 feet isn't going to be much of a fuel modification zone. I thought you, I like Newport Coast and this area here, don't they have close to 300, 400 feet?
No, 150 to 170.
Well, that's, okay. Go through it again, from the top of slope, how far down does it have to be the ornamental?
The A-zone is the first 20 feet, and then each of the successive zones are 50 feet.
Okay. So you got 120 feet. Okay.
Yeah.
So, because I noticed on the map over here that our newly approved Oasis sits right there on the edge of the, the red zone.
Yeah.
They've already burned three blocks into the residential area if you, you look at this particular map.
Yeah.
And I also noticed that the, the lower part of Buck Gully isn't, isn't shown on there and probably should be.
Well, no, that's what I was saying earlier. There were some anomalies in here that I pointed out to the State Fire Marshal, and I asked them to address, and they would feed that information that I gave them into the model and have those reevaluated. So they may or may not recommend Buck Gully and Morning Canyon. Until I see it, I won't know.
That's the lower Buck Gully and Morning Canyon, yeah?
All, well, the part that's shown in gray, you're, yeah, that's correct. So this is a very preliminary map. This is without any local input. Now, I've.
You know, a quick question, since you mentioned those areas are not included now, and maybe they won't be in the future. I mean, at that point, then, we're going to have to fall back on our own ordinance in order to get the fuel modification done.
No, we can, the council can declare, based on fire department recommendations, very high hazard, very high zone. The, the legislation gives the local council the authority to declare it even if the State Fire Marshal doesn't.
I see. So then, so we could bring those areas, even if they don't want to bring them in, we could bring them in ourselves.
Yeah. Yeah. I want to, I want to say one more thing. When we were first talking about these maps a year ago, my motivation for bringing some of the anomalies in wasn't for the protection of the slope. It was to harden the structures because anything in a very high fire hazard zone has to meet the, the new requirements of the building code for structures in those zones, for instance, dual glazed glass, protected eaves, roofing materials. Now, several of those items, we already have in our local ordinances. If your home is adjacent to the canyon area, those regulations already apply to you. The state law, I mean, this, this change would move those regulations out to all homes within the A-zone. So a lot of the homes built in Newport Coast already are going to meet the standards. There, there may be some changes in the vent provisions that they may not meet right now. But it, but it moves the regulations beyond those houses at the edge of the slope further out. And, and you've seen from the fires, you know, those, you know, fire doesn't discriminate. It doesn't just burn the ones on the edge of the canyon. It reaches way out into the neighborhood. So that's the intent of this law, and that was my intent. It was to harden the homes in the neighborhoods surrounding the canyons.
So, so this law then would require pre, homes that already exist?
No, 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 no.
To retrofit to meet the?
No, no retrofit, only new homes and substantial remodels.
Does our new Oasis construction meet these requirements?
Maybe not. But it's, it's, it isn't currently required by the law to do so because it's not adjacent to the canyon.
Should we be prudent and consider that?
I'd be, I'd be more than happy to, to take a look at it. You know, for instance, a lot of the regulations are, people already do dual glazed glass. I mean, those, you're hard pressed to see a new building built without dual glazed glass. The city already has a Class A roof ordinance. That's in excess of what the state law requires. You know, things like that. Sprinkler, the sprinkler regulation only applies to those homes on the canyon. It won't apply to the other homes in the, in the, yeah. Oasis will be sprinkled for another reason. Yeah.
What's the, what's the substantial remodel threshold for having to go and do the fuel modification?
50, 50% over two years.
And then, in the agenda item, you talked about Buck Gully on the environmental impact report. report. Are you planning, if you have to do an EIR, you're planning to go into Morning Canyon, too?
Yes, absolutely. Lower, middle, upper Buck, a couple areas in Newport Coast and Morning Canyon, both sides of the highway.
On the environmental document, what did the consultants say was so expensive about
this? It would seem like to me you're looking at vegetation and hillside erosion are the two major items that have to be looked at. And I don't quite understand why there would be such a huge cost involved.
There's going to be water quality, too, because you're going to have-
Well, I mean, you got runoff and it's, it's, I don't understand why that's a huge expense.
There's certainly no traffic studies, Nick, either.
Right. And there aren't a whole lot of, I guess you could get involved in alternatives, but I'm kind of curious about-
Well, as he indicated, he didn't do an RFP, so we don't know for sure how much it's going to cost, but that was the estimate that he found.
I'm certain that Mr. Webb is far more familiar with the environmental process than I am. I haven't been in a position where I've had to do one of these before, but I did show him all of the areas. We looked at the ordinance and that was the ballpark figure he gave me, so.
Now, Steve, I got a call just before I came here, fortuitously as it was, which is related in a way, a man who lives in Newport Coast and is at the same altitude, although it seems funny to talk about altitude in terms of Newport Coast, but, as the Yorba Linda fires. And he wanted to know about the water pressure in the hydrants and how often it's tested and are we very comfortable with our situation in comparison to what they met?
That area in Newport Coast serves by the Irvine Ranch Water District. There's a lot of pumps. The pump stations all have generators, store fuel on site. Yeah, we're very comfortable with that water. We get, even with a structure fire out there, we get a representative from Irvine Ranch Water District. They're automatically, they automatically self-dispatch. I believe when they detect a drop in water pressure, we've had them show up at several fires and it's, it's great to have that. So, our water pressure is probably between, I would guess, 80 to 90 pounds out there all the time.
So, I mean, is there a schedule of testing or something so we know for sure or is it on computers so we see that or how does that work?
I can't, I can't answer that. I don't know how IRWD does that. I don't know.
It's a totally different system than the Yorba Linda system. That particular one that had problems had a reservoir over here that was serving a ridge over here. There's a loop system that is very extensive within the down coast area. Like, for instance, I believe there's a water line connection that goes from where our new park is up at the very top, down the ridge line to tie into Crystal Cove to make a big lope in there. There's a number of reservoirs that are sprinkled around the hillsides, buried, some, some of them are visible, but they have a number of pump stations, too. And it's standard procedure within the various utility organizations for them to respond to any fire in areas which there is any doubt at all with crew members and the ability for emergency backups. IRWD is probably one of the most conservative organizations that I'm aware of related to backup systems. But the Newport Coast area is, is far better protected because they have loop systems where you can get water from two different directions in almost every area up there. There's probably a few little small ones, but you, if you look at the overall system, you can immediately pick up on that.
Yeah, I think I'll have this man call you.
I think that what he really needs to do, if he's that concerned with it, he needs to call the Irvine Ranch Water District and they, I'm sure that they have PR people that are very good. But they do have a, a large number of pressure zones up there that are regulated by all the various different systems.
Mr. Kiff just gave me a note that said IRWD will be here for a study session in January, so I don't know what that's about. I wish I could say exactly the same thing for areas of Corona del Mar. It's, it's probably not quite as dependable as what we have in Newport Coast as Mr. Webb described. However, just two weeks ago, I met with some of our public works staff and they're looking at some alternatives to bringing in more water in Newport Coast, a possibility. I'm sorry, Corona del Mar.
Steve, question for you. On the environmental studies, since, you know, we're not passing it through to a developer where the applicant, is there any reason where you couldn't have maybe a competitive process on doing those studies?
Oh, absolutely. I would, I would issue an RFP and get some competitive bids.
Okay, great.
Yes, absolutely. I'm sorry.
The code does not allow us to do a bidding process. We can get, we can do selections, professional services selections, like quality-based selections, and then negotiate the price.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you and I'll get back to you just as soon as I have something. Thank you very much. Thanks, Dave.
Anybody from the public want to comment on this item? Okay, so, no one will go on to the next item, which is the Buck Gully Resource and Recreation Management Plan?
I'm sorry, David, just got it. Oh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is a fairly short presentation, I hope, on the upper, I'm trying to say that, Upper Buck Gully Resource and Recreation Management Plan, or RRMP. This is something that your council approved a short while back and Mike O'Connell is with me from the Irvine Ranch Conservancy. And I wanted to highlight one aspect of this plan before it gets any further public input so that you can comment on it. So, brief history. Upper Buck Gully is 254 acres. It was formerly owned by the county. It's part of the Orange County Central Coastal Natural Communities Conservation Plan, or NCCP. And the NCCP is a habitat conservation plan. This was a concept set forth in state law. Newport Beach is a signatory to what's called the Implementation Agreement. To the NCCP. And then, there's also, you'll hear folks talk about the Nature Reserve of Orange County. That was formed to assist in the management of much of the NCCP lands and all NCCP landowners are voting members of NROC as we are, we're close to being. Much of the NCCP lands are part of what's called the Laguna Green Belt Authority. This is a JPA informed to involve elected officials from area cities in this land management. So, you don't have to remember all that, but just in case it comes up. A little bit more about Upper Buck Gully. It's owned, open space passive. It was fee-owned by the city as of July 1st, 2005. The only significant work that we've done out there in the upper gully is at Fifth and Poppy and that's a water quality improvement and an erosion control structure. Now, the NCCP, NCCP Implementation Agreement pledges the city to the following. We, we're obligated to do long-term adaptive biotic resource management and monitoring, habitat restoration, fire management, which of course Steve just talked about, public access and recreation, and then maintenance of existing infrastructure that's consistent with the terms of the NCCP. These are the allowable uses within the NCCP. Biological research, invasive species removal, control, habitat mitigation, fire and fuels management, recreation and public access, construction and operation of new facilities related to support of the permitted uses and activities related to new infrastructure, so the construction and operation of those, and then some emergency activities. But before you can do any of this, you have to do a Resource and Recreation Management Plan, or RRMP. And that has to be developed and then approved before the work can be done. So, about the RRMP, we hired the Irvine Ranch Conservancy about a year ago to do this work and to start to provide some land management for the gully. That process is underway and the feedback today is sought from you folks on one key recreational element and hopefully this comes up well. This is a trail concept for the Upper Buck Gully. So, this is the recreation side of the Recreation and Resource Management Plan. And I'm going to tell you about two aspects of the trail. There are two distinct, let me ground people. This is San Joaquin Hills Road. This is Newport Coast Drive. This is about where Fifth and Poppy hits. So, currently, right, you can start at Fifth and Poppy and go down a little bit to where our erosion control device is. And if you're really daring, you can illegally go all the way up what is roughly this trail and come all the way up, way up here by some of the Edison easements. So, the concept that Mike and the IRC have developed is to improve this a little bit more, make it a safe and accessible trail. And one of them would be a loop trail that would involve San Joaquin Hills Roll Road, potentially some parking along here and these lots here as well, that you could go down this route, down the base of the gully, cross over and improve culvert, come down to this bridge, come back up. That's about a 2.2 mile loop. And then, there's also a concept maybe to include a trail along the base of the gully that would link up Fifth and Poppy to the loop trail. And that is about a one point, a little bit more than a mile distance. And that involves the construction and improvement of four key bridges. So, thus, the nickname for this is the Four Bridges Trail right now. So, we wanted to share this idea with you and make sure we were on the right track. If this work were to be done, it would cost about the range of $200,000 to do all the improvements. And then, it'd have some maintenance obligation once it was in. Obviously, the major cost of that improvement is the bridge construction and the culvert construction.
What's the width of the trail and how would that compare to like El Moro where you can get a couple mountain bikers, one each direction, a walker?
The intent is not for it to be as narrow as a single track, if you're familiar with that. It's more, I think, actually, Mike can answer that a little bit better, but they have a device that can actually go down the trail and improve it and it's roughly three, why don't you come on and tell us, Mike, rather than me winging it?
Thanks, Dave. Standard trails that are sort of multi-use like that are about eight feet wide. So, you could ride two bikes side by side or a family can walk together or something like that, so. This, down particularly the bottom of the trail is an existing alignment. It's just overgrown. You have to be daring because it's overgrown with poison oak right now. But the, the orange part would be an extension that would essentially make that open and maintained, whereas now it grows over all the time. That would be, that's sort of, we look at that as sort of an option. The one that for sure we're recommending is the green one, which would be a 2.2 mile loop. If you wanted to go all the way down the gully, then you would need to authorize the Four Bridges Trail. The green loop would be very easy to construct. The alignment is almost all there now.
How much of that is, are on the Edison access roads?
Not that much. Mostly just in the upper, upper gully and then along San Joaquin Hills Road, there's a little bit of Edison access roads. Those are obviously open and maintained by Edison. I'm not sure whether the Orange County Fire Authority does it for them here, but I know that they maintain access roads for Edison elsewhere in the county.
So, how much of the 200,000 is related to the Four Bridges Trail?
About three quarters. I will tell you, though, that they're, they're nice bridges. They can be put in fairly easily. We've done some for our management agreement with the City of Irvine and they're, they're quite popular and they're very sturdy. They don't require a lot of maintenance. They would have to span far enough that the creek could continue to erode and not undercut the bridges, but that's fairly easy to do. They're not hard to put together.
What's the steepest grade on the green trail?
That's a good question. It is relatively steep. I think there's probably, yeah, right there is probably 50 or 60 feet in about a tenth of a mile. So, it's fairly steep getting up from the canyon. The rest of the trail, there's a reasonable elevation gain if you go from Fifth and Poppy all the way up to the end, but it's over a two and a half mile stretch, so it's not steep foot by foot.
We took my father, my 90-year-old father, didn't realize quite what we're getting into, but we walked from Fifth Avenue all the way up to San Joaquin.
Good for you. That's quite a hike.
So, it is, it's certainly makeable.
Yeah, yeah, it's possible to do.
It's really not that bad. I've done it also. The, I think that you probably, which I think you indicated that was about a 10% slope.
Yeah, something like that.
And I would imagine some of these are approaching that.
Yeah.
Because, like, for instance, for an example, Newport Coast Drive, the maximum slopes on that street are about 6%. And so, it would be a little steeper than that.
There isn't any portion of this that would be ADA or even what we would call accessible, which is not permitted as ADA, but, but relatively accessible. There's a flat area down near Fifth and Poppy. Dave, do you have that other slide? Maybe we can talk about some of the other.
What about on the orange portion? Is that a fairly, that's fairly level. Fairly level grade there?
Okay, I wanted to share with you some of the issues that have been emerging as we're pulling together the, the resource plan. Some of them are issues that exist currently. It's just that the Resource and Recreation Management Plan identifies them. One of them is dogs. There are no dogs that are allowed in any of the NCCP preserve areas. And currently, there's quite an active dog walking area down near the bottom. One of the things that we are suggesting that you might want to consider, and of course it would be subject to the approval of the wildlife agencies who oversee the NCCP, would be to create, if you look down the left, there's a little tiny red segment there and that seems to encompass most of the areas that people take their dogs. They just take them down and then they bring them back. And we've, we've found that if you give people a place to go, that they will generally stay there. The problem is if you take dogs and walk them through the whole thing. Dogs are significantly disruptive to native wildlife. There are a number of bobcats that live in this area. You may have even seen them yourselves and other wildlife. And so, dogs are prohibited. They're in there now, so there would have to be something involved with implementation of the plan. Another thing that you may want to consider, particularly of the trail extension, is if this is a self-guided or an open access area, there will be people down in the bottom of the canyon. Question about how the adjacent neighbors would feel about that, something you may want to consider as well. Not so much an issue on the green part of the trail. So, it's something to think about if you want to talk about doing the extension. The other thing is that the trail that goes down the, the whole bottom of the gully, it doesn't really make a loop anywhere. It's kind of a one-way. And I don't know, Nancy, when you went, whether you parked at one end and went to the other end or how you did it?
Well, we, for some reason, we thought we were going to walk up and back with my father. So, when we finally, he dragged himself up the last part, then my husband walked back and got the car.
Okay, yeah. A perfect example, it's not particularly convenient, whereas with the green loop trail, you can park up on San Joaquin Hills Road, do the loop and get right back to your car. And that's kind of a nice way to do it. There are some other elements that don't have to do with recreation that are emerging as part of this that you will want to consider. One is intrusions into the preserve. There are a number of homes there that have actually extended their landscaping and in some cases even their facilities into the preserve area. And that's something that would have to be addressed. There's someone that has about an acre of ice plant, for example, that's down inside. Yeah, most of those are down in the narrow part of the canyon. Another thing to consider, which is not something within our purview, but it will be a, an overlap between that and the fire management plan, is that the fuel modification zone on the south side over at Newport Coast is, is substantial because that was constructed after the preserve was designated, sorry, before the preserve was designated. The, the ones on the other side, on the north side of the gully, the fuel modification zone is much narrower. And if the city wishes to extend that out in any way, it would actually require an amendment to the NCCP document. Usually, those are possible. They're not easy. Usually, when those are done, we actually help the City of Irvine through an amendment. They require substantial conservation benefit in other areas and we think there is the possibility of that. So, you know, removal of invasive species and some habitat restoration to compensate for adjusting the fuel management zone. So, that's another thing to, to consider.
And those encroachments, hello, right here?
I'm sorry.
Right here. Those encroachments that are along, along Buck Gully, they're the upper portion, are they on the person's property or are they going off their property onto the canyon?
They're going off their property into the preserve.
Going off their property, yeah.
Michael, is there any possibility of getting state funding for those trails, do you think?
I doubt it. There is, the grants process is, is pretty much frozen up recently. One possibility would be to pursue the inexpensive alternative first and then add to it later on with potentially state grants. However, we would want to include all of it in the Resource and Recreation Management Plan and get that in. It's essentially, the RRMP is essentially an entitlement document for, for the preserve.
Now, would your organization build the bridges?
Yes. We would be happy to. I mean, anyone can build them, but we have developed a little expertise in that, so I'd be happy to show you some pictures of bridges that we've built elsewhere.
Explain, Mike, how they're brought in? Because that's important.
Sure. In a place like this, the, the supports for the bridge are laminated and they're eight, eight inches wide by about, oh, 24 inches usually. They're engineered to support the span of the bridge and we generally have to helicopter them in. We've worked with a helicopter company. It's actually an inexpensive way to do it because you, you can't actually physically get down into the canyon with a 60-foot-long timber that I just described. And so, we, we can have them come in and install it and it's usually a one or a two-hour process. These guys are really good and they just drop them right in. These guys are really good, and they just drop them right into the slots where the, where the bridge supports are.
That would be, we could sell tickets for that, I think.
Yeah, 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 it's quite a, quite an interesting thing to do. But they could obviously stage right up on, on San Joaquin Hills Road and drop them down in an afternoon.
One of the things that I would like to see is at least approval in concept of the entire trail system. And I'm perfectly willing to consider that we wouldn't do it all at once, but as, as those of us who've been involved in this process for quite a while, we were always thinking in terms of a complete trail. And I know that people that have used it before, the, the last bridge fell in because of erosion, particularly with mountain bikers. I mean, they love to come all the way down to the end. And the other aspect is I'd very much support having some place where the people could walk their dogs, even if they couldn't go on the rest of the trail.
Is, is this sort of a Newport Beach version of Four Bridges to Nowhere? You've got, you've got a, kind of a, a trail that goes from point A to point B, but what will be the, what, I guess mountain bikers would use that, but would really, would trail, would pedestrians really use that?
Well, they did before the bridge washed out. You would see people walking there all the time. They, you know, they walk part of the way and walk back. There's all sorts of wonderful flowers and everything in there, besides the poison oak.
My understanding is that before the gully got overgrown and there was a lot of vegetation, that, that was actually a relatively frequently-used trail for both walkers and, and bikers. One thing that you may want to consider that will probably, I would predict that it would come out in some of the, the public input sessions that we're planning, is whether you view Buck Gully as more of a broader community resource, or whether it's more focused on the local neighborhood. There will be, I think there's great potential for it to be a community resource and have people coming to there as a destination and hiking on the trail and walking and things like that. If it is more of a neighborhood thing, then you might want to think differently about the trail alignment and, and, and what you might put into it. But that's, that's an option that you may want to weigh. Just sort of what's your philosophy and vision for that, that as a recreational resource for the city?
Councilman Curry?
I would just echo Councilmember Gardner's support for the project. I think it's, as I've seen this outlined, an excellent addition to the recreation resources in this area. And there are a lot of people who are out on every weekend, and even not during the weekends, walking through these canyons and in the entire area. So we may have to phase this somewhat in terms of the financing, but I think this is a great improvement to the, to the, to the gully and to the neighborhood.
Councilman Webb, do you?
I too support it. Having actually been down there on several occasions, I think it is a, a great resource to allow for people to see the natural canyon areas. And I would kind of disagree, disagree that it's Four Bridges to Nowhere because you can park a car on either end, or if you wanted to, you can walk up around, tie back down, and come in. This, we can make a circle. It's probably a three-mile circle instead of a two-mile circle. But if you walk Babo Island at, in the mornings, that's a nice level, about two and a third miles, and so that this isn't that much farther. A little bit more exercise, but you could probably do it in a couple of hours.
One of the things that we have contemplated as part of our management agreement with you all is to have public programs as well. So we're not anticipating that this would be, just construct the infrastructure and then just let it sit there. We have an active volunteer program. We would do natural guided tours, interpretation. One thing that's been emerging in our organization, we're very, very aggressive about, is a volunteer fire watch program. We have now close to 150 volunteers that are trained in, in observing and deterring fire ignitions. And we believe that the urban fire issue, it all comes down to ignitions. And so we would hope to be able to deploy that here as well in support of our partnership with you.
Rep. Tenday?
Sue, bro, I think the multi-use trail concept is great, and having attended some of your docent programs are very educational. So I hope you can bring some of those in.
Thanks.
I'll register my support as well, and I'll even offer the services of my Boy Scout troop for eagle projects.
Great. You do lots of eagle projects. That's great. We'd love to do that.
We have them approved, do you, with helicopters?
We do them, Don approves them. He's the eagle coordinator for our district.
I just conclude, unless you have other questions, talking about the community outreach phase that Mike mentioned. We planned at least two neighborhood meetings, one in the lower area, near Oasis, if not, can't go in Oasis anymore, and then one up at the Newport Coast Community Center. And then a couple of the HOAs have already asked that I come and speak with them. We'll do that as well. And then we'll set up a webpage on this and allow people to record on with by email. And then we'll complete the plan and bring it back to you for approval, and then place the improvements in the budget context. I'm a little more optimistic than Mike in terms of grant opportunities, because we have done fairly well on these things if we can package it right, but, but we'll see, because that's certainly a goal of ours to reduce any impacts to the general fund with this. So finally, for more information for folks at home, that's how to reach us and how to find out more about the project.
I would add one more bullet to that, which is that all of this is obviously subject to the approval of the wildlife permitting agencies and the nature reserve of Orange County. So a step that we would take before seeking grants and improving the infrastructure would be, once you approve this plan, it would be sent, is it, is it in there?
No, it would be right in there.
Yeah, right in there. After bringing it back to City Council, would be send to wildlife agencies and wait 90 days, or however long it takes them to look at it, so.
Doesn't this require coastal permission?
Some of the construction probably would, you're right.
It's possible. A couple of the bridges we've installed before, actually, we were able to avoid the, at least the 404 permitting inland by how, how long the span was. We didn't actually impact the creek itself, so it depends on how they're engineered as well.
This is very visitor-serving, of course. I would expect the Coastal Commission to look on it favorably.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just put it in and let them get their own helicopter to pull it all out.
All right, thank you.
I have a question for Steve. Do we know that in the upper Buck Gully area that we can do the, the fuel modification zones in those properties without encroaching into the NCCP area?
Yeah, actually, could you put that photo back, Dave? Oh, wow. He's amazing. Yeah, this area in here is already, behind the new homes, is already fuel modification. These people over here live on Sand Castle. I, I met with a homeowner association the other night, and I think they're, they're very lucky people because the city owns the hazard behind the homes, and we pay for the clearance there every year. What we're looking at, and actually, I believe that it's cleared more than we need at this point. It's, in a lot of areas, it's more than 100 feet. And so we're looking at, at pulling that up a little bit and, and letting the canyon restore itself where, where it can in those areas. Now, the problem is this area right down here, right across from Fifth and Poppy, these people are in the same situation as those in Lower Buck, in that they own their property down to about the canyon bottom, close to the canyon bottom. So that's, that is part of my concern. But the rest of it, golf course turns into fuel mod right there, stays fuel mod behind the homes all the way up, and they do a very nice job. Those HOAs do a very nice job up there. These homeowner associations over here, same thing. And like Mike said, it was all, it was all implemented before they started working on this plan.
So we can do, we can do our plan without modifying the NCCP agreement?
What about this area right in here? You seem to skip that one.
No, sir, that's included in what I, I'm sorry, but that's included. The, the fuel mod runs, I'm sorry, it's not fuel mod. We actually do hazard reduction clearing behind those homes, runs all the way up there. Everything this city owns, we, we take responsibility for. The one thing that I, that I do see on this map that we, that the fire department's been concerned with for several years, is we've always wanted that Edison Road tied into the hazard reduction zone right there with a little spur, so that a fire originating up on San Joaquin Hills and burning downhill would be all within the Edison Road that's existing right now and would give us an opportunity to trap it. You know, fires burn downhill, you know, pretty slowly and gently, but it would give us, it would give us an opportunity. So I would hope, I would, I'll talk to these guys and see if we can't make some sort of a little connection of some sort there, just over to the hazard reduction.
Steve, we actually looked at that as a possible recreational trail connection as well, and there is a steep part of the gully there, and it would require a span that would be just, putting a, a road there would be very expensive to do. So we just moved it down. But we can look at it again if you want to.
Always costs a lot of money when it comes to me. Seems like. Anything else?
Thanks, Steve. Okay, anybody from the public want to comment? Okay, seeing no one, thank you very much, Dave and Michael. Move on to the next item, which is the banner sign regulations.
Yes, Council, Kathy Wilkott of my office is going to be updating the council. I'm sure memories might not run quite as long as February 12th, but that's the last time we brought this to you. And all we're doing tonight is just updating you on the issues that the council asked, asked for us, us to come back with, some additional information. I apologize, that information is being given to you right now, but Kathy's just going to go over it right now. There's more for you to read. What we're looking for tonight is just some information from the council on if we responded to the issues that you'd raised in February 12th in a way that, that seemed positive. And our thought would be that if that's the case, then we would be bringing this back if the council agreed in early January for an action item on the agenda to consider. There's one remaining issue that Kathy will go over that's still kind of up in the air, but I don't think it needs to hold up the ordinance and the other policy changes as a whole. So Kathy, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you. This isn't nearly as exciting as walking trails in Buck Gully, so I'll keep it as concise as possible. In February, the February 12th staff report, we brought proposed changes to Title 13, Title 10, and also to Council Policy L16. I'm going to very briefly, I did not need glasses when I started here, briefly summarize the changes that we proposed to Title 10. Those have not changed since February, but we didn't really discuss them then. Title 10 regulates interference with the use of the public sidewalks. So this additional section added to Title 10 would regulate the display of personally-attended non-commercial signs. This allows First Amendment speech in the form of picketing. There is a lot of First Amendment protection for picketing activities, so we allow it, but we regulate in this chapter, the regulate the size and the time of the display. We keep the displays off the roads and the medians. We require a five-foot clearance for pedestrians to be able to walk by so they can't block the sidewalk. We specify that they cannot hold the signs in a manner that impedes the visibility of the intersection to drivers for safety purposes. And we clarify that there can be no commercial mascots or sign twirlers in Newport Beach. They can hold non-commercial opinion signs, but they cannot hold commercial signs. The changes to Title 13, we went over in more detail in last February, and you had requested that staff come back with clarified provisions, removing any notice provisions to the owners of signs that were posted illegally on public property. We have done that. And we have also, on your direction, provided mechanisms for cost recovery so that we can bill the people who illegally, bill the owners of the illegal signs and get the cost of removal back, and also bill them for any cost of damage to public property that occurred during the posting or removal of the signs. So if you look at the section that I passed out, this is an excerpt from our, the ordinance, the proposed ordinance that would amend Title 13. And this is so you don't have to wade through the entire ordinance right now. We clarify that the illegal signs, either commercial or non-commercial, shall be removed. We do not have any provision for notice to the signs owners. Section D is reimbursement for cost of removal and damage to city property. And it specifies that... Kathy, just a second. So if, I'm looking at B and C. We can remove this, we talk about temporary storage, but we do not have to temporarily store it if we don't. No, we don't. If, if General Services wants to continue doing that as a courtesy, they can continue doing that, but their concerns in the past has been the cost associated with that. My, I would imagine they wouldn't be.
The cost associated with storing the signs?
Pulling them, hauling them out.
They'd also have been over at the General Services yard. How could they, I don't think they...
Because then you grab them and you put them up again, and the staff has to take them down again.
Well, she's saying the cost of storage. No, I'm not talking about the cost of going back and getting them again.
The cost of going and getting them is, it's kind of prorated, and I've talked with revenue about how they would do this, and they have a system for assessing what the cost of, you know, sign removal would be. Oh, yeah, I would imagine the cost of storage is not extreme, but it does take staff to drive it back, pile it up in the corner. In the past, we have, you know, allowed people to go back and search and bring their signs out, you know, retrieve their signs during a certain period.
Been there, done that.
I bet you have. Sorry. Let's see. And then if the individual sign causes damage to public property, they will be billed for that. On the second page, we talk about how you identify the owner of an illegal sign. We have a presumption there that the known commercial or non-commercial entity or individual or group whose name or message is on the sign is the owner of the sign. Now, if somebody is presented with an assessment from revenue and they want to challenge that, we have a provision for them to rebut with evidence to the, the finance director, excuse me, administrative services director, that it was not their sign, or that the costs that they're being billed are unreasonable. And if they want to appeal the administrative service director's determination on that, then they can. They can take it to a hearing officer, just like you can with any administrative citation.
Kathy, enforcement in doing that, do we take pictures of those signs and, and use that for backup?
I think that's a good recommended procedure for them to follow, at least at the beginning, while they're, while everybody in town who's posting signs is learning the new rules, yeah. So we hope that this accomplishes what you've asked us to do back in February. If you have any changes that you would like made, please direct that at the end of the session. Then we can move to Council Policy L16. We have three policies in the Council Policy Manual currently that regulate temporary banners and signs of third parties on city property. All three policies have a limited display provision for display of private party signs. What the proposed new Council Policy does is combine the provisions of those three policies into one, so you can find it easily. And it makes the policy conform with First Amendment law, and it also reflects changes to the sign code, both in 2005 and proposed in 2009. And it more accurately describes the situations in which banners are currently being displayed on city property. As we discussed in February, without going too much into First Amendment law, because you heard a lot about that then, if the signs are displayed on city fixtures, if, if the signs are displayed on city fixtures, and if the city defines the categories of speech and speakers that it will allow on those fixtures, and if it sticks to those categories, then the city can create a limited public forum on that fixture, and it can legally restrict the categories of speech there. Once a limited public forum's established, then the question is, on what basis do the city say yes to one applicant and no to another? The current proposed categories of speech and speakers on city fixtures are nonprofit and charitable organizations conducting events sponsored or cosponsored by the city, and sponsors or cosponsors of city-sponsored sports events. These are fairly consistent with what's there right now. The issue we've run into is that in actual practice, the city has been allowing banners to be displayed that promote nonprofit community events that are not sponsored or cosponsored by the city. And our, our office recommends keeping the sponsorship requirement. The reason we're making that recommendation is that if the city opens the door to a broad category of speakers, such as nonprofits conducting community-wide events, which sounds just fine, all nonprofits who request to use the forum have to be allowed, subject to availability. So there is no viewpoint discrimination allowed within the defined category, so we cannot base a no on whether it's a controversial message or one that we strongly disagree with. Even limitations like no political or religious messages have created problems for cities in the past.
Kathy, what would be the definition of city-sponsored? Does that mean we actually have to put money into it?
I looked at our sponsorship policy, and I was wondering if that might be something that could be tweaked. There were two categories, and both of them appeared to involve money, and one of them, I believe, involves some revenue sharing. But it's possible with council support that you can make an additional category that had a lower requirement, a lower threshold for sponsorship. And we would recommend that. It's an easy fix. If a nonprofit event is of particular interest to a city, but it isn't being sponsored, then the city can announce the dates and the times and the location of that event, and do a certain level of promotion through the government speech doctrine. And government speech, we're going to talk more about when we bring the website policy back that Councilwoman Dagel has, has requested, but I won't go into it too much tonight, except to say that the government can speak for itself on its own property. And there are very few, there are restrictions... And there are very few, there are restrictions, but not many. And it can adopt the third-party speech of others, if it determines the overarching message, and it approves every word that is said. That gives us a lot of latitude. The final issue is, the issue of where those signs and banners are displayed. I think you're all familiar with the situation at PCH and Marguerite, and also at Superior and PCH, and some other areas in the city. And we talked about creating the more permanent type of message display, both to clarify the fact that this is a city fixture, this is not a message being posted in the traditional public forum area, and also just to make it more attractive, so you don't have a collection of sagging banners in the middle of a median. Individual council members also expressed interest in this in the interim, so we've talked in the various departments about what could be created. Our office met with Public Works, Recreation Senior Services, also Utilities, General Services, and the City Manager's Office. And there are a variety of opinions in-house. Recreation, for example, promotes many of its events in a variety of these locations. Related, the subject of an electronic reader board at Oasis has come up. And, it's instead of doing it both for Oasis purposes, and also as a substitute for the banners that are displayed in Grant Howell Park. The traffic engineer does have issues with the electronic reader boards, even if we keep, keep a static display instead of frequently changing them, and Steve's going to talk about that after this, but, the traffic engineer did not have a problem with an electronic reader board-type display at the Oasis facility. We did, however, discuss the fact that this is in a residential neighborhood, and if something were allowed at that location, there would need to be provisions for, you know, regulating the lights, dimming the lights at certain hours, that kind of thing. So, if directed, and this is where we're asking for your direction, the staff will review the potential locations where more permanent message display facilities could be erected, and staff would look at the costs and safety at those, at those locations, and report back to council at another study session. The City Attorney's Office is primarily concerned with the legality of the speech issues at the display, message display locations, and also with the traffic safety and potential liability. Public Works is primarily concerned with the traffic safety, and Steve is going to address those issues. But before I turn the microphone, microphone over to Steve, I just wanted to clarify, when he's done, we are asking you for direction on whether the changes regarding cost recovery for sign removal are sufficient, whether the council wants us to pursue the banner issues in a way that staff has suggested, and are there locations that the council would like staff to consider for permanent message displays? And also whether you would like us to bring this back and include the cost, the potential costs of doing this in next year's CPI budget. Now I'll give it to Steve.
Thank you, Kathy, and Mayor members of council. I just wanted to point out, you know, over the years, the use of banners has become more and more popular, and I think, as I recall, when I first came to the city, there were very few limited locations where they were actually allowed. And I think what we've seen lately is that a lot of the banners are popping up all over town. And I think our biggest concern is on the arterial highways, where you have signs that are virtually unregulated as to lettering size and the amount of information. And you start running into the issue of, is it safe for the motorists to read these banners at, at the speeds that they're traveling at? And it's very akin to the same issue, when, a little while back, when we started talking about doing citywide guide signs. And we, we have quite a bit of lengthy discussion about the requirements of letter sizes, and can the motors safely read the message while driving at, at the posted speed? So, I think we're, we're looking at the possibility of maybe reducing the ability to have banners on arterials in high-speed areas, and, and maybe just allow, and essentially, lower speed, maybe 35 miles or less, essentially the business areas, which would include Corona del Mar, and some of the, the slower arterials in town, where, where you might be able to safely read that message. Other alternatives would be maybe to limit the size of the banner and the lettering sizes, and that could be quite a lengthy and difficult process, to deal with all the various nonprofits who want to have banners, and we would have to have some kind of standardized, I guess, messaging. That's one of the reasons why we feel that the electronic boards might, that are under the city's control, might be a really effective use, because we can limit the message, we can, we can limit the size of the, the font, the type of font, and essentially get the message out there that the folks want to get out, but do it in a way that's fairly uniform and easy to read, and a very safe environment as well. So, those are the kinds of things that we hopefully can build into this process.
It could also be a, a safety factor there, I would think, in case of an emergency that head for the hills.
Yeah, very good point.
What's the difference in driving down MacArthur and looking at a banner, and having to look over at the, you know, the shopping centers there at Bison, and reading the signs on the stores? I mean, what's, I mean, if you followed your logic through, wouldn't we ban the signs on all the stores, so they wouldn't be visible to people driving down the street?
Well, I think the signs that we do allow, we don't allow signs in the right-of-way, but the ones that are just adjacent to the right-of-way do have some regulation as to the message out that you can put on, and I'm not, you know, I'm not an expert in the planning code, but I know that there are definite rules regarding the sizes of those banners and the, and the messages that can be on them.
Steve, I think the question is, though, is there an added safety feature to the fact that these are located in the right-of-way, in the median, in the middle of an intersection, say, as opposed to, on a business? Is there a difference? What's, is there a difference in whatever the speed of the cars are of being distracted by business signs, as opposed to something in the median or in the right-of-way?
Yeah, I think it's something, I think it's something that's in the right-of-way, is essentially, you know, like any other sign in the right-of-way, that we would do regulatory sign, or, or guide sign, directional sign. They should be readable. I mean, you see some of these banners are very small, fine print, and you can just imagine, on a high-speed roadway, if someone decides to slow down significantly to see if they can read that fine print on the banner, you could cause an accident, and could, this could be liability issues.
Yeah, well, no, my question was like Robin said, Bill, I mean, what's the difference between trying to read the fine print on a banner, and trying to read what kind of yogurt they're serving at Tooty Fruity today?
Well, I, I don't think we allow those kinds of extensive signs, adjacent to the ri, in the right-of-way. So, we could, we could look into that and see what those differences are.
Okay, Keith?
Let me ask Kathy. Kathy, are we able to adopt an ordinance that picks up, you know, Edison utility poles, for example, and signs that are illegally posted on those poles? Or that can compel Edison to sweep their poles with more frequency than perhaps they did in this last election cycle?
I can take a look at that. I know that Caltrans, for instance, can delegate, can delegate to us the ability to clean up theirs and remove signs from their property.
And that was my next question, is do we have the ability to regulate signs that are placed in Caltrans right-of-way on highway signs and that kind of thing?
I think we have to get their permission to go and remove it. I don't know how terribly seriously Caltrans would take that. I would imagine they'd be more than happy to delegate that to us. Would you like us to go, begin checking that out with them?
I, I personally would. I think those are two areas where we saw a lot of abuse of-
Yeah, I agree.
-good signage, you know, technique in this last cycle, and I think we would, we would want to look at that. And then, I noticed by, just in looking at the City of Oceanside website, that in this last election cycle, that they, that they notify all the candidates there, that, you know, their signs that are placed illegally are subject to being retrieved, and, and they're going to be billed for the cost of the retrieval and disposal. So I, I do support the cost recovery aspects of this policy as outlined here.
Great. Janet Brown also mentioned to me, answering one of the question about the legibility of the sign and the safety issue, whether it's a business sign, or a sign that's, you know, in the median. She says that a business sign, you become more familiar with as you pass it on a daily basis, and so it has less of a visual impact and takes less attention than a banner, which has the benefit of novelty and is sitting right in front of you, and, so you might take more of a look at what is, you know, the new thing in your range of vision, rather than looking at Champagne's Market as you drive by, because you know it's there.
You know, I have yet to see one of those changeable message signs that looks very attractive. And, I remember that, when I was on the Planning Commission, that Franklin Realty tried to do one, and brought it in front of the Planning Commission, and some of you here may remember this, and it ended up at the council on some level, and they brought a display model and put it out in the parking lot, and I remember Gary Adams coming back into the council and just saying, "That's the ugliest thing I ever saw," and it was like, end of discussion right there.
Have you seen the one that you go approach UCI? I don't think that's-
They have improved since then.
Franklin Realty is-
But that would be part of the research that we would do as adoption, so that we would give you the information on what they look like, how they can be maintained, and how they would, how they would look. The other thing that we talked about was, if the readable message board maybe is expensive or it doesn't look that nice, we could construct some sort of a, of a framework or whatever, that would allow for the banners to be used, but present them in a certain size and framework that would at least, at least look nicer, and it would be more something that the city could control. So those are the types of options that we would anticipate going back and looking at, and coming back to the council with, with, with.
So, would they be like lit on both sides, so traffic can see them coming from both directions? Or you'd have two separate ones, one for each direction, or how would that end up then?
Well, we'd have to look at what the different options. I mean, for instance, like on Marguerite, they would only be, it would only be one direction, excuse me.
The Franklin Realty sign was also proposing to change the copy much more frequently than the signs the city is contemplating. I think we were discussing a maximum of two times in any 24-hour period, so maybe you could have one message at one commute time and one message at another, but certainly not every three minutes.
Is that what they were proposing?
Yeah, they were, yeah, it was-
It was a long time ago.
They were proposing, and we also, the issue was, is that that would have been their sign, so we would have had no control over what they put on it.
And I agree with former Councilman Adams' assessment of the design. I saw the picture.
Councilman Webb?
Where does the Christmas tree lighting service signs, lost cat signs, and garage sale signs fall in this category?
Litter.
Well, I know you say litter. Does, does that mean that the city can, this falls under, they can just be removed?
They can just be removed. Since the issue came up in February, and prior to the issue coming up during the last council election, I did some more research on what were the situations where the city, where the courts had found that the owners had a property interest in a temporary sign, even one illegally posted, and where didn't they? In the case, in every case that a temporary sign illegally posted had been, they had mentioned the owner having an ownership in it, that sign was posted on some form of private property, either somebody's house, or somebody's business, and in one case, somebody's car, which was parked on a public roadway. But they never mentioned anybody having a, a ownership interest when it was just left on city property.
Okay, what, what is, are there ramifications if a private citizen removes a cat sign on a streetlight pole, or a Christmas tree light sign that's, that's in a median area?
I have been tempted. We don't encourage that because of our safety concerns for the private citizens removing them, but the code is silent, and there is no, the code is silent on that matter, and there's no penalty for it.
I was going to point out that the, the cat and the real estate signs, and the prop, the lights, those are, and have always been removed, because they've always been illegal in the public right-of-way. So, the, the point is, though, that they're not removed, I mean, they can be up, because, you know, throughout your neighborhood, or wherever, wherever they are, wherever somebody happens to put them up, they're not removed unless there's a complaint, or a code enforcement officer, or somebody sees them. So, it's not, it's not something, it's like most of our other code enforcement, unless there's a complaint, or they're observed personally, a lot of times, they will step for a while.
Okay, but there isn't an ordinance or a, a problem with private people removing it, I am assuming that if that can be done safely, like, if you're standing in a parkway area, there's-
Not from our perspective, no.
Yeah, okay.
Councilman Gardner?
You asked several questions at the beginning, and my answer is yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, does anyone disagree with any of the recommendations? I don't see anyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody from the public want to comment on this? Okay, seeing no one, we'll take public comments on anything not on the agenda. Okay, we'll recess to close session.
I was walking today, and there's two of those Christmas light installation signs that, that were just, you know, it's quite ugly, that, over in Dover Drive, and, and I just-